embracing each other on the floor, so that's wonderful. A warm welcome to everyone in attendance. My name is councillor Brian Homshoe and I'm the Chair of the Central Local Area Committee. The theme of today's event is a diverse community. And it's an opportunity for you to talk about what's important to you and your community. And we have a number of tables later to be able to do that. The event has been co-produced with residents and community groups. And it is not just a Sheffield City Council meeting. But we're aiming for a holistic approach to improve our communities by working together. Thank you to Ismail and Maria at ISRAK Centre for hosting us. We've got a great line up of speakers and facilitators, including a number of local people. We have stalls from, I believe, Say It at the back there. Hello, give us a wave, Say It. Welcoming Cultures. Oh, we got someone from Welcoming Cultures. Thank you. Stand Up To Racism. There. Made it. Well done, thank you. And Porterbrook Pharmacy? Yeah. Yeah, Mohammed from Porterbrook Pharmacy. Yeah, put your hand up, thank you Mohammed. And he is going to join us and he's here to provide some advice in culturally sensitive language. You have been handed question slips on arrival. Has that happened? Checking. Right. We're going to collect those question slips from you at the break and go through them. So we have questions for the public questions section. There are more question slips on the tables, just checking with the deal, thank you. And more if you ask one of the officers at the top table here. So before I ask the other councillors to introduce themselves, I'm going to hand over to Philippa in Democratic Services at the council to read out the housekeeping arrangements for the building.
Thank you Chair. Before we start, there are just a few housekeeping arrangements to mention. Please can I request that mobile telephones and other such equipment are switched to silent mode so as not to disturb the conduct of the meeting. There is no fire test plan for today. If there is an emergency evacuation, please take instructions from the council staff present. The assembly point is in Waitrose Car Park. The toilet facilities are situated through these doors, through the doors on the left, then the men's is on the right and the ladies is straight on. The meeting today is open to the public and will be streamed live and for subsequent broadcasts via the council's website. You should be aware that the council is a data controller under the Data Protection Act. Data collectors during this webcast will be retained in accordance with the council's published policy. By entering the meeting room, you are consenting to being filmed and to the possible use of those images and sound recordings for webcasting. One final thing to mention, we have hearing loops available. If you'd like to use one, please let us know. Thank you.
Thank you Philippa. A couple more things I want to fill you in on is that there are more chairs at the front here, if anyone needs a seat, plus around some of the tables as well. And also, I'll, I need to put out my thanks to all the Racial Equality Commission commissioners who worked really hard pulling together the report that was launched in July 2022 and which is going to form one of the backbones of this meeting. Some of them are here now and will join us for the discussions later. So on the councillors, I'm going to go from the end there. If you can use your Canoi phone. And this is also an opportunity to make sure they're all working. It's working, but you get feedback here. So Douglas Johnson, a councillor for City Ward.
Hi, I'm Tom Hunt, I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, I'm Nora McLean, I'm councillor for Walkley Ward.
Hi, I'm Martin Ferguson, councillor for City Ward.
Hi everyone, I'm Adil Zaman, the Community Services Manager for Central.
Hi, it's councillor Brian Homshoe for Brumhill and Sherrill Vale Ward.
Philippa, from Democratic Services.
Councillor, local theme, we're also on this side. Councillor Henry Notted for Hillsborough Ward.
Councillor David for BSV.
Councillor Andrew Ardente for Brumhill and Sherrill Vale.
And Philippa, if you wouldn't mind, we've got some apologies. There's been a little bit of our record of Covid, most of those, I know. So that's one of the reasons why we haven't got so many councillors.
We have apologies from councillor Christine Gilligan-Cubbo, councillor Bernard Little, councillor Toby Mallinson and councillor Ruth Murcherow. Thank you.
Item three on the agenda is exclusion of public and press. Now, there are actually no items that require the exclusion of the public and press. So we will move on to item four. This is the declaration of interest from the councillors, from the members, who may wish to declare an interest in any of the items of business on the agenda. And if you do want to do that, could you refer to the item of business? And why you're referring it as a declaration of interest? Whether it's personal or pecuniary, which is this odd word, pecuniary, which I believe means just pretty much financial, if there's a financial interest. So does anyone have any of that, please? No, that's wonderful. So what we plan to do now is to move on to the interactive part of the event as soon as possible. So we will move on to item five. The Central Local Area Committee Spend Report, where I'm going to hand on to Adil Zaman to give a presentation.
Thanks Chair. It's more of a verbal update and I won't keep folks for long as there's more interesting speakers than I. Just to provide some background to the audience, local area committees were established in May 2021 and there are seven across the city, one of which is the Central Act. There are four wards within Central, and these are Brumhill and Sherrill Vale, where we are today. There's the City Ward, Hillsborough and Walkley. Each local area committee has a budget of £100,000 to address local priorities within each of its plans. And each time we have a public meeting, we, I say we, I as the Community Services Manager and my colleagues across the city have to provide a spend update to you within our communities. In terms of today, page three of the spend report, I believe it's item five within your packs, is a report that I have shared with the Chair and the committee. Page three highlights the total spend for last financial year, which was 2022 and 23, in which across our wards, there was a total of just over 86,000 spent. And there is a breakdown in the paper, aligned to each lack priority. There was an underspend of 13,000, which has been carried forward to this financial year. So this year, the proposal is to create a Central Local Area Committee Fund and for the committee to agree £25,000 per ward, in which we will provide grants for those community groups and voluntary sector organisations to propose projects that contribute to the lack priorities. The five priorities within the plan, on the back of feedback from local people are transport on highways, communities and neighbourhoods, environment, business employment and skills and community safety. I remember that off by heart. There's two recommendations today for the committee, one of which is around noting the spend for the last financial year. And the other is to agree for the 2324 budget of £25,000 per ward as described in the report.
So I, I'm now on the back of that, thank you Adil. I now ask the committee to firstly, note the committed spend from 2223 as detailed in the report. And secondly, to agree, this is where our decision making comes in, agree the use of the 202324 lack budget of £25,000 per ward as described in the report against Central Lack Community Plan. And that includes the underspend from 202223. So that's our decision making, I think, could we do this? I'm sorry.
Adil, could you clarify, Adil, could you, I'm sorry, I called you with your brother's name, did I? Adil, could you clarify about the cost of living amount as well that has been allocated, I believe, to the lack?
Thanks Angela. In terms of the cost of living, I believe that will be some conversations that we will have and will be brought to the next meeting at the end of November. Just for the audience, there was a motion passed at full council for cost of living funds to be allocated to local area committees to tackle issues and to address some of the issues within our communities around the cost of living. That will be something that will be brought to the next meeting at the end of November.
Is that okay Angela? Yeah, thank you. Okay, so that's a vote by show of hands, I think we probably do. Yep, 10%. That's it, I think that's unanimous. Right, so item six, so this is where it gets much more interactive, I hope, and engaging. We have a presentation by Khalid and Ahmed called Our Journey. And I'm going to hand over them for a presentation. They're the founders of Infinite Skills and they will explain what that is and their journey.
Okay guys, Salaam alaikum, good evening. My name is Ahmed and first of all, I'd like to thank the organisers of the event, especially Adil who asked us to talk about our organisation, Infinite Skills. Can you hear me now? Let me sit down maybe, that might be better. So my name is Ahmed Mohammed, we've been asked to talk about our organisation, Infinite Skills, so we titled it Our Journey, barriers are real but they don't need to define us. So next slide. And so briefly, we're going to go through some brief introductions of the co-founders, look at the journeys and backgrounds of the co-founders and how they started Infinite Skills and then look at their mission of kind of empowering others. So moving on to the next slide. So myself, my name is Ahmed Mohammed, I'm one of the co-founders. I've got extensive experience, over 12 years in education management and teaching. In terms of credentials, I've got Masters in Education and TESO from University of Exeter, another Masters in International Business Management at Sheffield Hall University and a Bachelor in Modeling and Management from also Sheffield Hall University. My colleague sitting there, Khalid, he's also got a lot of extensive experience in curriculum designing teaching and he is also one of the co-founders, Masters in Urban Regeneration, he's got PGDA QTLS and also a postgraduate at scientific and academic practice. So we've worked in the Middle East and also in the UK. And can we go to the next slide? So a little bit about ourselves, so fled the civil war back in Somalia in the early 90s, came here, I kind of grew up in the 1990s. And you know, in those days when we came, we had to kind of adjust, trying to deal with cultural barriers, language barriers. And growing up in those days, we faced a number of issues such as racism, such as crime and drugs, a lot of our people that we grew up with ended up in prison. Luckily, even though they were probably more qualified and talented than us, they fell into criminal offences and drug offences. Some of them, you know, talking about some of the knife crime going on, some of them even passed away. So, but my parents kind of instilled in me a way out of education and so I kind of tried to push myself in education. And initially I was not, you know, predicted very good grades, but I was predicted three HCs, GCCs, but I got 11 HCs. And you know, my colleague Khalid, same kind of background, came here, he grew up in Brumhill, around the corner from here, faced also other numerous barriers, confronted with socio-economic disparities, you know, people, low-income families and, you know, mainly on benefits. And, you know, also in terms of race, you know, when I was growing up, I experienced that in school and also organised football. So there was a commentary made on some of the racism face as a football team and that was aired on the Discovery Channel and you can still actually find it on YouTube somewhere. This was back in 2006. Khalid also experienced some racism, he was more avid boxing fan, so he was more into boxing. And he also found education as a key to liberation. And so we kind of became friends, been friends more than 20 years. So then we, if you change it to the next slide, we came up with the idea. So whilst we were working in Riyadh, I think it was 2021, we're thinking of coming back to the UK after a number of years working abroad. And we were sitting in a coffee shop, we said, listen, how can we give back to our community from some of the success that we've had in terms of our careers and education? How can we, you know, kind of replicate that and try and uplift people from our communities? So we came up with Infinite Skills, a way of trying to, you know, support people from disadvantaged, underprivileged communities, so to try and kind of uplift and upskill them. So we started an organisation as a UK learning provider and a community-led organisation to try and uplift those people from our communities. So mainly worked with people from the vein community, young offenders, low-income families, those described not in education, employment, training, refugees and asylum seekers. So we had this kind of shared vision of empowerment, trying to, you know, support people and using our lived experience, coming from these communities and showing them it can be done guys. So this kind of, we wanted to create a platform for change, for people to see that it's light at the end of the tunnel. And it kind of focused on overcoming some of the barriers. So the experience that we had, kind of going through the educational system and using some of that to give back. So the next slide. So we tried to kind of, we cannot go into too many details today because, you know, time constraints. We looked at, you know, some of the barriers that people face from our communities, such as a lack of opportunities, socio-economic disparities, discrimination, language barriers, some institutional racism that we face, especially in schools. So we tried to empower some of those individuals and kind of, if we create, kind of support those individuals, then maybe the community can be strengthened and fostering some, and building resilience and growth within it. And we also looked at our organisation to try and create the ecosystem of trying to recruit from within. So for example, on a level two business administration courses, we have some people who've passed that and they're working with us and doing some of the admin work. And some of the teachers, teacher assistants did some of the teaching courses that we provide. So we tried to do a cycle where we kind of, you know, use our own people, upskill them and then get them to work. So the next slide. Some of the services that are offered by Infinite Skills, so we have over 100 CPD qualifications to upskill people, we have a number of accredited, level one to level five courses such as business administration, social skills, customer service, digital skills, some of those skills that people kind of require, young people as well, education and training. So we provide also comprehensive career guidance and tailored mentoring because everyone is different. And using our lived experience and some of the ways that we kind of, you know, tackle some of the issues we face in schools, colleges, universities and working in the, you know, UK sector and Middle East, acquire quite a lot of knowledge and cultural knowledge that can medical people. So we're also very keen and big on community wealth building and entrepreneurship because there's a lot of talent in our communities, trying to support them to start in their own businesses, is something that we really want to target because we've started our own organisation and I've also run another two organisations. So I want to kind of use that as a way for some of the young people and people in our communities to do the same. And this kind of creates, you know, building confidence, resilience and eventually trying to get people social mobility. We're also very keen on health and wellbeing, especially mental health within, you know, the male, within the voice, it's not really spoken about, but there's a lot of people, lately, you know, a lot of mental health issues are coming up in our, in our communities and talking about it and having also lived experience of this, kind of helps us to speak to the younger people and people within our community. Moving on to some recent successes, so case study for someone, it's a lady, a young woman called Kadija, who was one of 24 learners that entered the university using our help. So she was a single young mother who kind of put her career on hold to raise her children. She did a level five DET, Diploma in Education, which allowed her to jump into the final year of a degree in Bachelor's in Education at Greenwich University. And that saved her two years of, you know, studying and £80,000 in fees. So that's one, you know, success. Next case study is some of the workshops we have done here in this building actually. Some of the young people that wanted, you know, to get into employment and kind of looked at some, boosting their aspirations, looking at supporting them with their CVs. So they were finding it difficult to even get interviews, so we kind of supported them with their CVs and then we got them into, some of them, after 45 young people, nine of them secured some form of full-time, part-time jobs, 10 of them went into university. So that's quite a good start. And some that had jobs at the home office, private pharmacies and some supportive delivery providers. The last case study that we're going to look at, some of the work that we do, the girls and women as well, so they're not left behind. So we looked at kind of, you know, exploring their careers and, you know, kind of align their values with their chosen careers, kind of delving into, you know, what drives them, what they actually want and what society wants them to do or what their families are pushing them into. So we felt, we saw some of them that wanted to, you know, work abroad in nursing and business marketing. So we used our, you know, contacts in the Middle East to try and get them linked up with people working, UK professionals working in the Middle East in those professions and, you know, UAE, Qatar and Kuwait. So the last slide, I think, some upcoming projects. So we've got a project coming out of Sports England, kind of morphing basketball with employability skills. So it is kind of getting people healthy, active, but at the same time focusing on some of the soft core skills that they can, you know, improve on and giving them also employability skills and CPD certification. So combining both to get, you know, social mobility. And then we've also been selected as one of the other education providers to the council, where we provide now ESO courses and employer skills courses. Also we're working with Department of Education on a programme called Taking Teaching Further, where we're trying to get experienced business professionals to get into further education teaching. So we're working with five people from our community now, supporting them to get into teaching in further education, such as colleges. And the last project we work on is called Sheffield Youth Neighbourhood Community, some people know that as things, which is kind of hosted now by Voluntary Action Sheffield. And we have kind of provided some of the CPD and workshops for the new up-and-coming youth workers and also hub managers. So I think that's it, that's the last slide. So thank you very much for listening. Anything else you can follow up? I just totally tried taking more of the facts.
I kind of knew that was going to happen, but it's really important that we followed through on that and learnt about your journeys. That's one of the values of doing co-production, is you get great stories like this, not just about what Infinite Skills can provide, but the example it provides for young people and older people, I suppose as well. Right, our next presentation, I'm going to hand over to Hamira Ibrahim to give a presentation on the Sheffield Race Equality Commission. This is an update on the commission and we're looking forward to the legacy project for that. So would you like to come up, Hamira?
Do you want to sit? That seems to be a good place. That's it, that's all. It's long, yeah? It's a bit daunting to look here with all these faces looking at you. Pardon you everybody, my name's Hamira Ibrahim, I'm an Equality Engagement Officer that works at Sheffield City Council, within the Equality Team. I started at the council about 18 months ago and my work, main work area is around race, which is why I've kind of picked up some of the rec stuff. So I came in when the rec was, just before the rec was launched last July and then I've been working on it ever since. So today's really just a bit of background and bear with me because I know there'll be people in the audience that are very, very familiar with the rec. I know, like councillor Homshoe said, we've already got commissioners that took part and know the whole process and will absolutely know exactly what I'm talking about. There might be people in the audience who are, this is something new and they haven't heard about, so that's kind of why I'm coming along. So in my role, I'm going to all the lack meetings across the city. As you can imagine, people have different levels of understanding and knowledge about the rec, so it's more of a kind of information session and just to update where we are currently with it. Okay, first slide then please. Okay, so today's session is just to give you a bit of background information about what the rec was, how it came about and the recommendations it made. It's kind of to update you now where we are and what we're working is, what we're working on as a whole city commitment to meet in the rec recommendations. And then I believe that we're going to have some discussion around the room, around the recommendations and what people are thinking to gather some feedback really. Next slide then please. So what do we know, just to put it in context, what do we know about our city? So we know Sheffield is home to approximately 556,000 people, which is currently one of the UK's most diverse, culturally diverse cities. We know that roughly there's 120 languages spoken across the city. Roughly 40% of Sheffield citizens were not born in England. We know that it's home to two universities, which attract students from all across the world. And we also know from recent 2021 census data that Sheffield is growing in diversity. So just those few statements, kind of. So just those few statements kind of sum up how diverse Sheffield is and how diversity is changing across the city. We know that looking at demographics, for instance, some communities that maybe didn't have to think about diversity or embrace diversity as much in the past are really now having to think about it because people are spreading across the city. So it's something that we all need to be thinking about, we all need to be talking about as citizens of Sheffield. And we know that this works better and outcomes improve when we're working together, talking to communities, listening to communities and getting everybody involved in this conversation. So we know, you know, that's the purpose today, to get feedback from communities because things work better when we listen to you because ultimately you're in the communities, you know what the situation is. So it's really, really important that we value your voices in any developments that's happening. Next slide please. So just what do we know about central area of the city? So again, central area has a population of about 8,700 people. We know it's very diverse in terms of age, ethnicity, disability. So again, we're talking about intersectionality here, so we need to be looking at things together from a multiple intersectional lens and levels of employment. We know and it's very visible across the room today, again, that there's many languages spoken in this central area, people who come from different backgrounds, cultures, religions and beliefs. So again, it's about valuing everybody as individuals and making sure that, you know, they can, they can put pathway in life to be their authentic selves in their day-to-day living. We have to be discussing race, we know it's crucial and we know that we need to improve race outcomes for our local residents. And again, like I said, this works better when we adopt a model of cultural humility where we're learning from you and you're helping shape policies and actions moving forward. Okay, next slide please. So just a bit of background information and obviously, you know, like I said, there'll be lots of you that are very familiar with this, but the Race Equality Commission came about really following 2020 George Floyd's merger in the US where suddenly there was a global spotlight on racism throughout the world. At that point Sheffield put forward an independent commission. So Sheffield City Council commissioned it, but if this wasn't for Sheffield City Council, it's really important that we understand that this is for the whole city, so this is a whole city commission. There was an independent chair put in place who worked alongside 24 commissioners of a mix of gender and ethnicity who spent hours and hours and hours listening to and speaking to people who were asked to come forward to give their lived experience about race and how race, how their life was affected by race. So there was 165 witnesses involved in this project, 150 pieces of written evidence, roughly about 60 hours of recorded transcripts, over 600 pages of those transcripts, so about in total about 400,000 words of evidence. So you can imagine for that, it was a big project that took place across the city and it was set up ultimately to consider the nature extent and impact of racism and racial disparities on the city of Sheffield. So it focused on the six main areas, so education, business and employment, health, civic life in communities, crime and justice and sport and culture. Okay, next slide please. So after listening to all of this evidence and pulling all the evidence together, the rec concluded that race and racism remains significant throughout the life of Sheffield citizens. Very, very clear through evidence that, you know, it's an issue that we have to address as a city in order to improve. One of the recommendations that came within the final report was the setting of a legacy group, which I will talk about in a little while, but that was to put the level of accountability into the city that is needed in order to improve race outcomes. So it was very, very clear that we can't keep ignoring this, that we have to make, we have to action this, we have to improve outcomes across the city. Very, very clear that change is needed to improve outcomes and that organisations and communities need to be thinking about race equality on a day-to-day basis. Targets need to be managed wisely, achievable timescales put across those targets and more importantly, how we measure impacts needs to be considered in that because whatever we put in place ultimately has to have an impact and is to improve race outcomes for people across the city. Action plans or targets need to incorporate very clearly all voices, so senior leaders, staff, community members. So it doesn't, you know, we need to get rid of the hierarchy, we need to include everybody's voice in devising targets and action plans moving forward. And the effort, assets in becoming an anti-racist organisation, no matter what size your organisation is, whether it's employing 30 people or 3,000 people, is everybody's responsibility and we know that this works better when we do it together. Practice has to be embedded systematically and we need to acknowledge the fact that this is everybody's journey moving forward together. And race is one of those issues that some people's racial literacy might be better or more, they might have more knowledge than others. However, it's about working together and taking everybody on that journey together. It's about sharing good practices, it's about having those uncomfortable conversations at times, it's about acknowledging everybody's individual thoughts and reflections on race or their unconscious biases that they might have and it's about having those open and honest discussions moving forward so we can address some of the issues. Okay, next slide please. So again, there were seven recommendations that came out of the report with 43 attached action points and across the table as you will see a summary report, that's the smaller report that was brought along today. All the seven, all those seven recommendations underpin recommendation one and that is to become an anti-racist city and anti-racist organisations within the city. And they name different, different things that organisations need to be looking at in order to become that anti-racist organisation and city. So it doesn't give a definite definition, however it tells you things that you need to be thinking about and systems that you need to be thinking about within your work. Okay, next slide please. So again, just to clarify, this is a city-wide commission, so all organisations across Sheffield need to be thinking about this. The race commission that goes through and assigns different organisations where they think improvements need to be made. So various organisations were mentioned within the reports, the Sheffield City Council, the NHS, that's all hospitals working across Sheffield, Chamber of Commerce, the integrated care system, South Yorkshire Police, both universities, things like Learn Sheffield. And then it also mentions how we can work with voluntary community and faith sectors across the city and then also it mentions our cultural lenses or organisations that need to be thinking about this as well across the city. So it's very much a holistic viewpoint, looking at things across the city and that, you know, that just kind of reemphasises the point we need to be working together on this across the city. Next slide please. So just to go back to the legacy group because I know a lot of people are asking, where is the legacy group? It was a recommendation that was in the report, you know, one year on and people are still asking, well, where is the legacy group? So just to update you on that, that was a recommendation that was put forward in the report to hold organisations to account against the recommendations. So it very, very clearly says that in order to improve as a city, we have to put our level of accountability in. Where that's currently sitting at the moment is with Sheffield City Partnership Board. So they've, they are working on a task and finish group at the moment to get the model right. But I will say it's really, really important that the model is set up right and so it has the impact that it needs to have and also it's sustainable. There's obviously complications along with that, we need to look at capacity of that, the funding attached to that and the governance and what that will look like. So the task and finish group is looking at that now to devise the best model moving forward. That's proposed by November, they should have that model in place and they'll go out to consultations so people can feedback on that and then it's hoped by December, January time that will be in place. But I will say again, and I've always said to everybody dealing with this, there is a lot of work going on across the city already on this and what I will say is that we do not have to wait for a legacy group for us to be talking about race, for us to be improving race within our own organisations, our own individual practice, something that we need to be doing as Sheffield citizens, as a collective. Yes, that will bring the level of accountability, but actually what I would say at this stage is that we don't need to wait for that to be, you know, up and running, we need to be thinking about this all the time as an ongoing process. Most important thing about the legacy group obviously is that when it's up and running, it has the best long-term vision, so we need to, you know, that's why it's taken a little bit of time to set up. And that's me in total. Next slide. Okay, like I said, I work for the policy team, any issues or questions you have around this evening, there are reports on tables, if anybody wants extra copies, I have got some in my bag to hand out, but yeah, thank you very much for listening.
Great, thank you, Hamira. That's a whistle stop tour. Let me just turn this one off. That was a whistle stop tour, but you will be around for the rest of the evening?
Yeah.
Okay. And on one of the tables. I will say just very briefly is that the tables that we've arranged tonight are pretty much mirror the different aspects of the report. So, you know, we've got health, crime, community, et cetera on the tables. Right, so our third presentation coming up is Roots and Futures and Welcome Cultures. So if you'd like to come up to the front. So we've got Lizzie Craig Atkins, who's a lecturer in human osteology, which you may have explained, and also Theresa Rostad, founder of Care for Young People's Future. So you've worked, and of welcoming cultures, I must say that as well. So you've got a presentation and that's me, what you want.
Thank you very much for inviting us to come and speak about two projects that collaborate together that are focused on exploring culture heritage stories in the city of Sheffield. Theresa and I are both at table six, in the middle at the back. I'm going to start by talking about Roots and Futures and move on to Theresa talking about welcoming cultures. So Roots and Futures is a collaborative research project where we have been exploring stories and histories with communities across the city, seeking to understand people's needs and priorities when it comes to the way that Sheffield does its heritage strategy and the way that the city needs to develop and refine its heritage policy to better reflect things that people want and need. One of the key elements behind our project is understanding people's passions and people's enthusiasms and where people's priorities lie when we talk about stories of the past. The quotes that popped up on the screen refer to some of the views that were shared with us by one particular community group we worked with, this is the Black Ladies Group at Park Library, who explained that to them, history made them feel connected and gave them a sense of pride. But then they reflected that when you look across Sheffield, they don't always see things that reflect aspects of their histories and their culture. They said, what is there that would let you know that there are black and brown people living here? And it's like part of history has been stolen. So responding to these really emotive and deep responses that people had to history and heritage within the city, we've gone out and talked to groups, we've collected data and we wanted to really reflect where people are coming from. I'm going to just show a quick video which says a little bit about the project from our partners and tells you a little bit about what we've been doing over the past three years. That's the video, if you need to play it. Or not. While they're looking at the video, I'll just tell you a little bit more about the context of the project. So for the last 12 months particularly, we've been funded by the Arts Humanities Research Council, a research funder for research in the UK, working with a series of community partners, including groups like the DAKA, like Zest Community Centre, like Care for Young People's Future, the organisation that Theresa runs, with a variety of different communities in the city. The focus of our consultations have really been about trying to find ways of connecting communities' needs and desires to the way in which the city is delivering heritage policy. And we might as well just move on to the next slide, it's fine, don't worry about it. So collaborating to generate these different insights, we're really keen that what we do directly feeds into what the city then goes on and delivers for people so they can see real and meaningful change in their communities. Some of those key areas include delivering policy and strategy that already exists. So joined up Heritage Sheffield are a group in the city who have developed a heritage strategy for the city. Our work is feeding directly into and delivering part of one of their aims, which is to champion a diverse heritage reflecting a diverse Sheffield. We also speak directly to recommendation five from the Race Equality Commission, which was just talked about, particularly within the area of celebrating Sheffield through sport and culture, past, present and future. So in doing the work we're doing, we're feeding back this information a whole variety of different ways. There's some Roots and Futures booklets on the tables in front of you, we do have some more if you particularly want one and can't get your hands on one. The first booklet is all about feeding back to communities and sharing the voices that collaborated to our project. We've done a particular oral history project with the Black Ladies Group, which is an absolutely wonderful reflection of their particular stories of coming to Sheffield as members of the Windrush generation. That's currently on display at Weston Park Museum. We've also produced documentation that speaks directly to policymakers in the city, ensuring that the various consultations we undertook feed directly to those who have decision-making roles in deciding how heritage policy is framed in the future. And finally, for researchers as well, we've produced talk kits to ensure that the things we've learned and that communities have shared with us about how to do this work better and more effectively are being fed back to other researchers to improve the way that we actually do consultation work in our world. So there was a whole variety of different information that we're collecting, a whole variety of perspectives that have been built up, but there's some really key action plans and objectives for the ways in which we're going to grow the project in future. We want to continue to create more space for different voices when we talk about heritage in the city. We want to make sure that knowledge is effectively distributed and shared so people feel that their contributions are actually feeding back into change and seeing things happening that directly reflect their needs. It's all about, in the first instance, areas of belonging and visibility, which are two areas that were very much highlighted in conversations with us. And one way of many that we're trying to feed this back is through participation in Big Life, the City Gold Project. We're keen to build on stronger partnerships to ensure that collectively we can build this work together. We want to share consultation approaches to ensure that researchers like myself in the universities are growing and building our understanding of the correct ways to do this sort of work. And finally, a passion of mine, which is finding ways to use academic funding to feed back into effective work and support the communities in the cities that universities are situated. And that is a real core priority of the project going forwards. I'll hand over to Theresa.
Hi everyone, lovely to see many, many familiar faces and people that I work with and that I trust. And yeah, I hope to many more people that I can work together. So if we can open the PowerPoint, of course, please. PowerPoint. You've got three documents, we need two PDFs and a PowerPoint.
Right, so yeah, I'm the founder of Care for Young People's Futures, which is an organisation that looks at non-formal education and empowering underserved communities to speak out. In Roma language, welcome to this public meeting where I will be leading with Lizzie on the cultural table. That flag reflects my heritage, my background and the way that I kind of got to engage with people, the freedom of choice is something that is really big into my community. That flag is the flag of the Roma community, blue representing the sky, green representing the grass and the 16 red spoken chakra, the fact that we became Romadi by necessity.
Yeah, next slide please. So welcoming cultures team, we've got Lydia with us today. Lydia, if you wanted to say hello, a big, big activist and supporter for migrants in Sheffield, having her own heart from living in Sheffield, also wrote a book about how is it as a migrant woman to live in Sheffield. And I'm really, really grateful for having Lydia alongside with me, who did a lot of amazing work on the social media videos, if you follow us, because it's really important to increase our visibility on social media as well and celebrate our culture. The other, the other members are not with us today, but it's Patrick who's a history teacher at the Shreya Academy, Melinda used to be with us, which... Melinda used to be with us, which is at the City of Sanctuary. And Max Solomon, music teacher. Yeah, the next slide. Right, so I'm just going to kind of, why did I came with this idea of welcoming cultures? Because we tried to define the problem during Covid, we started the New Constellations meetings, I was part of them, and we were thinking great galleries dying. And I was telling Kay, well, I really want, my biggest ambition is to have a multicultural museum for the underserved communities and for children that become looked after children and they lose their identity and history. And so I've started welcoming cultures. Kay was like, yeah, you should go ahead. So the problem was that when we'd done focus groups and consultations with the community, it was all done voluntarily. I did not have a single penny to do that work. It's all come from our part and 50 people joining on this journey for the first year without any single money. And that's the power of the community that you have in this city. And I think some of the best things that have happened in this city were done by the communities. Remember about the meals that have been done during Covid, how much food, translation, videos, that is the level of commitment that you get from your communities if you're engaging with them right. That's a message for both sides. So the problem is that our communities feel misrepresented, underrepresented in institutions, educational institutions, museums, universities across the city. There's a lot of culture in the community. As soon as you get out of the community, that culture doesn't seem to be valued or even like much more than that. It's kind of really deep. So what we've done, we thought like, can we go to, Lizzie came with the, someone from the university, Jonathan is not here, he shared with us this call from the local community. We've applied, we got it, thanks God. And it was about increasing staff workforce in the community with lived experience. I want us to be proud of our community members that have lived experience but doesn't get to be recognised. So I've got this funding, I've invested into some training and the support that I got from the University of Sheffield Roots and Futures and the museum, which Cheryl Bowen is here, and I love her so much, I would just say, you know, having existing support resources and working in partnership is the key. We're not doing well in Sheffield at working in partnership. We are wasting resources on doing the same things instead of using collaborative work. And that's one of my biggest ambitions, to bring people together and understand it's not competition. This is about making Sheffield the best and ensuring that those institutions who are making Sheffield still poor are going back to the community and are investing into those ones. Because what the communities are saying to me is that actually those big institutions in our city are creating poverty here. So how can we all, you know, come together and look at that? So we focused on decolonising teaching, like the whole programme that we have, educational programmes in the city that are not inclusive, go into arts, go into music, go into, you know, universities. Are those diverse programmes? Do they reflect your demographics? You've got 120 languages. By 2025, you'll have 25% of the population of Sheffield with a diverse background. That's one in four. Do we have one in four people, leaders? Our leaders need to be brave but also have empathy and compassion. And I want our leaders to be brave and fight for us and get the best for us, for our communities. I don't want to step in rooms seeing leaders being scared to speak out. And the more I see that, the more proud I feel. So I'm going to be finishing in two minutes. If you want to just quickly go through the slides, I'm going to show you my beautiful family and how, where you comes from dictates what door opens to you. As soon as I will wear my Roma skirt, not every door will open for me. So that means Sheffield will become an anti-racist city when I feel safe to wear that skirt in the city and when I feel that I can get any job and I can still be treated in a school the same that I would be by just wearing another type of outfit. Do you want to carry on, please? Yep, next one. These are some of the people that I wrote about it, that if I leave Sheffield, these are ordinary people making extraordinary choices that made me feel Sheffield like at home. Some of them, you might know them, it's Val Hozier from the council, from the new arrivals team, used to be there, Usha, Sarah, many, many more. Yep, the next one, Mama Gogo as well. Now, that's my mum on top right side, that's my mum, my family, but they didn't have the same opportunities like I have now. And everything that you see in me, I got it from my, a man in my life, a biggest historian than my father. He would know the whole history of the whole extended family. So how are we valuing that knowledge that our parents and our communities have? Is by recognising that lived experience. And going back to my mum, why is it that the third generation is experiencing the same inequality? So that's where we need to do a bit better. Yeah? That's my beautiful children that are always with me. As a single parent, you need to normalise these things and you need to offer support to people like me that are here in this city to bring the best out of people. Yeah? Do you want to move the slide? I think yes. I'm going to ask you, leave it with you, what is your vision first and what do I mean by this? Just look at those two quotes. We are all equal before the law but not before those appointed to apply it. And impartiality is not being neutral, it's about standing up for justice. If you just want to show the PDF image with the impact that it had by having partnership work, and I will just say this, the effect of the working partnership in the community and for political partners, whether it's organisations, institutions, it's absolutely amazing and fascinating. It increases, for political partners, it can be any education, it increases your visibility of the voice and the needs of communities. It looks a gratitude from different institutions, collaboration and ongoing contact. Your trust immediately is increasing when you engage with our communities. Do you want to go a bit slower? So there's loads of benefits on both sides, okay? And that's all about trust, building relationships. And I will just say one last thing that I highlighted here before I finish. So remember, community engagement is not about sending an email to me to get engaged, to let my community know that you're doing something. No. Community engagement, it's a slow process that takes time and it's about unexpected relationships, people telling you things that you, you know, they will only tell people that they trust. And I will just say, we need to continue to have brave and compassionate leaders. And yeah, I think there's a lot of amazing work happening here. Under welcoming cultures, in only five months, we have reached 7,000 people of Sheffield, diverse people that have adopted and the vision that we have at welcoming cultures have copied, learned our events, did their own events, asked for our support. We gave the tools to the community to have their voice heard, to co-create resources. That's what we need to do to increase capacity in our community. And that's when the poverty will reduce, inequalities will disappear. And yeah, that's it pretty much for me. Thank you all so much.
So thank you very much, Theresa. Passion there, stories of lived experience and important lived experiences to be communicated and all feeling into how we might make Sheffield an anti-racist city, which is going to be our aim. I'm going to move on to, oh, by the way, all these presentations are going to be shared. So if you signed up through the system and also perhaps if you hand your email to Adele or put it on your question sheet, then you'll be sent the presentation. So what I wanted to do now is to break out into groups. We are not going to get our 45 minutes, we are going to get about half an hour. And then we're going to have a very brief break where you, please, do get yourself a cup of tea or coffee and come and sit down again. Go to the loo, et cetera. But the reason I'm saying that is because we will get the feedback from these tables, which I think is going to be very important that we share that. And then that feedback will then move on into the different areas that you've been covering. So roundtable discussions are to which you can move around from one to the other. Don't be stuck on any particular one if you want to move on to a second one, but please be aware that they are discussions, so don't be noisy, scraping chairs, all that kind of thing, if you can possibly avoid it, because there will be discussions going. So the following themes are going to be healthy communities, business employment and skills, our communities, culture, education, safer communities, and there will be another table, which is about the city goals. City goals are meant to describe the kind of city we want to be in and the outcomes we want to achieve. Now, the numbers of the tables are facing away from me, so I can't see which one, but I think it's one, two, three, four. Got that, okay. Yeah, and then five, six, yes, yes, seven at the back. So healthy communities, table one. Will the facilitators introduce themselves when people are sat down at that table? Thank you. And same with all the others. Please facilitate it, just talk to the folks on your table and just introduce yourselves. Table two is education. We've got some educators on that table, that's good. Table three, safer communities. Two people from South Yorkshire Police, great stuff. Table four, business employment and skills. Table five, our communities. Table six, culture. So Theresa and Lizzie, who've just been speaking, table six. And table seven is James, who will be talking about city goals as well on that table. Yeah? But you can move around when you've had a go. We're going to follow that by short refreshment break. Right, okay. Oh, note also, we've got question slips as well, mentioned that a couple of times before, but fill those in because they'll be coming back to me for the second part of the evening and I will try and answer those questions that you have. Thank you. I think that's it. So if you want to move around onto your tables, I think this is pretty good actually. But we do have a couple more things that we need to cover this evening and maybe we might actually get them finished by 8pm. And at that point, if anyone wants to network further, please do so. So extremely lively meeting. Can everyone sit their seats, please? We'll be starting again in five minutes. Well, not five minutes, right now, actually. Thank you. Thank you, Malaga. Okay, so that seems to have worked better than me. Very good. So can you assume your seats? We're going to move into public, move into public questions. Thank you. Everyone's very lively and excited, we want to carry on discussing. So can we have a very, very quick feedback from each of the tables? One or two minutes, that's it. Just bullet points of what you discovered on your table. So is someone willing to do that, the table one? Table one? So there's a ton of noise coming around.
So we, yeah, we had a lot of discussions. We had to break our group into two groups. So I think some of the key things that came out were, well, there were actually some questions we said we were asked, so looking at long-term plans rather than short-term plans for what was fed back on our table. And people asked what is going to happen with the feedback that we've got, that we're going to provide, since there could be so much shared on that. And so some of the things came out, there's a lot of conversation around green spaces. People shared that there were less green spaces and more spaces were needed. Some people said there was enough green spaces but they need to be better used.
Can I add a bit around the conversation about green spaces also raised this thing about design? There needs to be a way that we design the use of green spaces that is not always, you know, low maintenance, let's just pave it. I think that there is an understanding with the city centre, if you're in the central area, you can't expect, you know, meadows. But there's something around designing green spaces where people who are stuck in a concrete setup can come out and be active and to begin doing things and take ownership of the spaces around them. But that has to be by some design rather than accidentally.
That's great. So we'll just leave it.
Production, yeah.
We'll just leave it at those two points. To respond to your first one, which was about where is this going to be shared with? We are planning, I talked about this with you this morning, Adele, and we talked about going to the NHS, we talked about the Health Subcommittee on the local council and there was somewhere else we discussed it. We'll take that further where it's going to go, but it wasn't going nowhere. All these, we talked this morning about where they would go to. So on the second aspect, we had a big light meeting three months ago, which discussed in real depth parks and open spaces. And that was raised there, though not as eloquently as you just did, about the need for it and the impact on city-centred communities not having a green space. I'm going to have to move on to the next table.
We're not quite done just on one thing. If I use the word access and that encompass many things, we've got representation from many, many other ethnicities here. And question of access in every possible way we can think of is something to bring back. Thank you.
Thank you. Make sure it's on your written stuff. Okay, so table two, which is education focus.
A lot of people that came up with the ideas left, so. So some of the things that we came up with, how can we positively engage communities to make a difference and raise aspirations for young people? The first thing we came up with is, or the first people came up with, were relatable role models, so seeing is believing. So rather than just having role models, having role models that kind of represent young people's aspirations. That's the first thing. Something else that we came up with were a lot more trips to places such as universities, companies or other places where young people really want to end up in. Understanding barriers, you know, barriers is kind of a buzzword that's kind of thrown around in the community and in education settings, but barriers such as, you know, applications when it comes to things such as, you know, universities or even apprenticeships as well. I know they talk about apprenticeships being an alternative way to people getting employment, but they are extremely competitive. I mean, I was working for an apprenticeship company and for each apprenticeship position, there's about 100,000 applicants, so getting people help with such as, things such as applications, CVs, and also more accessibility to employment and education for people who have criminal records and making them understand that, you know, just because you have caution or, you know, you have X, Y and Z, they are still, or they are still looking for you. There are some of the things that we came up with. Anything else you want to add?
Yeah, just last point is, in education, we said lots of services, the council office that supports the children, but we need to connect the children to these services. And that's the biggest thing we said. All right, that's it from us.
Thank you, thank you very much for that. Again, that written is going to go forward. I think this is largely a council function. I can't see where else this would go to, but so it could go towards. Um, but so if it could go towards, um, uh, the Meredith, for example, you'll, you'll be able to get this. Head of, head of the council's, uh, education. So, thank you. Uh, table three, I know, uh, you've got to head up, one of you, Lisa's got to head off at eight P M. So if you could give your, uh, a little short feedback and then we'll take a, we'll take a long feedback.
Yeah, no, we'll do it quickly, that's fine. Um, so highlighting what areas are important in making communities feel safe. Um, it was a sense of belonging, uh, being around, uh, communities, people where they, they feel that they belong in the, in their, in their own communities. Um, a lack of communication between, um, organisations such as the police, um, and councils and not working effectively together. Uh, familiarity, knowing the sort of layouts of the places where they are. People saying that actually if they know where they are and they've lived in an area for a certain amount of time, you feel safer than moving out of an area, uh, to somewhere new where you, you don't have that sense of belonging. Um, different housing providers in sort of, uh, communities and how they all work differently and not knowing who to contact when there's a problem. Um, transient communities, people taking it as walk-throughs and using it as cut-throughs, actually causing problems in communities rather than it being the locals. Um, so, and also we asked, how can we positively engage communities to make a difference and raise awareness? Um, higher police visibility, more people out on foot, properly engaging with the communities, particularly around, uh, young people, um, getting into schools, um, education around stock and search, um, explaining sort of police powers, um, and, and getting into, um, uh, into, into the communities and engaging from a young age.
Two-way.
So, yeah, and two-way, a two-way communication between sort of, uh, the police and the local communities.
Thanks, Laurie, can I put it short? Thank you. Could, uh, Violence Reduction unit and also South Yorkshire Police take your own feedback? It's on your table, so why not just do that and cut us out? Yeah, but make sure we get a copy. Right, um, so table four, which looks at, uh, business employment and skills. Uh, some brief feedback, please.
Um, yeah, so our question was, uh, what areas, what areas, um, are missing when it comes to business employment and skills? Um, one of the, uh, feedbacks that we actually got was basically wanting more support for Hong Kong arrivals, clear, more clearer support. So I think if you look at that as a city, we need to have, we need to be able to identify exactly where people come and get that support when they actually come to, come into the city. Um, again, we kind, we kind of looked at the apprenticeships. Um, how can our young, how can young people actually go into apprenticeships when they don't actually know what the businesses actually are? What is it to be an engineer? Um, when they're actually looking for representation from the diverse community, we lack, we know we lack engineers. I think I want to kind of go back over to the education, uh, what education we're actually saying there. We know when it comes to diverse young people, um, especially boys more likely to be excluded. So if you're excluded, you're not going to get your A T Cs. So you know, if you don't get your A T Cs, you're not going to get on the STEM. So where do you actually go there? So we've got this vicious, vicious circle where I know you've mentioned about Meredith. I think we need to have a full conversation to say, we need to look at that pipeline in how we actually get our young people to actually move forward.
Thank you very much. I think that's the case then, perhaps this table shares with, with your group as well. Through Ruth, maybe? Would you be okay to take?
Yeah.
That on? Yeah, because there's thickly aspects there of adult skills, isn't there?
Absolutely.
Uh, sorry, table five, which is, uh, community-based.
Um, so our first question was, what do you love about where you live? Um, and the main thing that came out from it was the community, the neighbours, the gardens, Israac Centre, uh, friendly people, progress, um, and walking festivals. So it just shows that it's the people that people love about where they live. Um, and then the next question that we had was, what can be, um, improved in the area that you live? Um, so what we said was the council backlog, um, things taking too long, the sense of just putting like, um, a Band-Aid on stuff instead of actually fixing the problems. Um, yeah, poor services. One of the main points was cut to poorer areas. So you can just see that is just being neglected, um, ignoring areas. And litter is another one that we had. Um, and then the next one was, how can we address your concerns for central ideas? Um, which was public ownership, um, of brief and priorities. You're vetting in what works in the area, so just having a more, just having a better communication between the council and the residents and the community. So the issues can be raised a lot more quicker, issues can be resolved better as well. Um, and then the last bit was, what are the potential barriers to address your concerns? Um, the main thing that was said was the poor communication. Um, which bit? And the lack of money given to the areas and not knowing where money is being poured or where investments is going to. That is a big issue, right? Yep.
Thank you, thanks very much. Um, that's all very city council-based, but I actually think this, this stuff is going to be done by communities themselves. And I'm thinking of certain, uh, initiatives like, uh, the, the one that Dave is, is involved with in, uh, Sunnybank, uh, the work that Israac does as well, you know, pulling things together within Israac, uh, and talking to local communities. So, um, it's not all on the city council, it also has to come from communities themselves with some facilitation.
No, what was always saying, what, I was going to say, the council, that you do need the council to agree to put them together, uh, on holiday, I mean, everyone working together, it's not about the city council, it was about pointing out the issues that would have happened in the area.
Yeah, I think you're right, you're right there, it is structural, I wasn't trying to say that you were just blaming the council. Uh, it's about the council facilitating those issues that you highlighted. Yeah. Uh, table six, which is, uh, culture, culture and aspects.
Okay, so the questions we had at our table is, what does culture mean to you? And how can we learn and celebrate different cultures in your community? We've got three or four points, because these are very personal questions about people's own impressions. I'm just going to pass it around just to get those points from the people that made them.
Oh, sorry. Um, so yeah, I was asked, why is my culture important? And I just thought, so you know what culture I'm talking about, I'm mixed race, I, I have black, um, Jamaican and Cuban heritage. Um, and to me, my culture is important because it's a crucial part of society and it influenced many other cultures, cultures. My culture is often taken and used for profit by the very people who used to mock it and degrade us for it. But my culture and its intended purpose by its intended people is important because it isn't just our culture, it's our history and our story.
Yeah, my culture is, uh, important to me because it gives me a sense of belonging. I feel part of something bigger than me and it helps me connect with others that feel the same. And it gives me structure and meaning to my life. Supposedly, I'm Tamil, uh, so I'm from the south of India. Big people language called Tamil and, yeah, and that is a very big part of my culture.
Um, I took a slightly different, uh, view on this question and this is what I wrote. Uh, for me, culture is an umbrella term that describes a wide range of activities which people may choose to participate in during their leisure time and which can improve the quality of their lives. Um, for example, sport, physical activity, arts, heritage, creative activities. But sadly, there is plenty of evidence that access to these activities and opportunities are not equally accessible across different population groups and within and between communities. The reasons for this need to be understood and addressed systematically across the city.
Hi, I'm Ben Bennett. Um, one of the questions was, um, the parts of my culture I value the most are, well, this is my answer. It's my culture and I don't appreciate someone else dictating my life story for me.
Great, thank you very much. Yeah, that's, that's really key, that no one takes control of what you want to say. No one takes control of what you want to say, is, is, thanks, Ben. Is there someone else who wants to speak?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, my name's Wesley Saunders. Um, about culture. Culture is not a way, you said, I'm afraid, it isn't about sports. Culture is about your birthright. Culture is about what you learn from your people, your community. Culture is that which you try to preserve for your community. I've seen the way they try to water down our black culture, even Shempies. We have to be going around correcting people, I have to go around correcting people because the way the system is set up is to deny us our culture. And many parts of that is to be seen within the education department from a very young age, from kindergarten. We need to work in it here, let people hold on to their culture while they integrate. We don't integrate, we might speak a thousand different languages, but when we come to a group session, we all stick to our own little group. We don't integrate. That's the main thing we need to learn is how to integrate and stop talking about it and actually deal with it.
Yeah. Thank you, um. Makes me think about humility and, and learning and you have to approach it in a very humble way. And, and it, I think I'm learning something here as well, listening to everyone here. Last table, please. Uh, so that was, um, uh, city goals. Uh, probably James, would you? Your feedback on that?
Yeah, thank you, Chair. Um, so our conversation was slightly different because we were talking about the city goals process, so quick bit of feedback, um, really good conversation, thank you to, to everyone, um, who participated in it. Um, we had a variety of people, some people had been involved in the city goals, some people hadn't, um, and questions about how we ensure that we, um, uh, reach out to as many different groups and, uh, people across the city as we possibly can, including particularly in the, in the city centre. We had a, a good conversation about some of the things that people hope to see, uh, through the city goals process. So, um, some important points about, um, the importance of our green assets in the city, um, but also recognising the inequalities within our green assets and what we can do to, to reduce those inequalities. Equality is a, as a core concept, um, in, as, as part of the goals process. Um, thinking about a just transition as well, so how we, uh, ensure that we do that in a way that, um, reduces disparities, uh, between different communities. Um, an important role for the city centre, um, within the goals that we need to make sure is reflected. And then transport or mobility for all, so ensuring that everyone is able to get around the city, um, that we're thinking about active travel and reducing disparities in terms of active travel as well. So, um, a lot of, uh, rich conversation there, um, so thank you.
Uh, thank you, thank you very much. Thank you for all your feedback. Um, I'm afraid I had to be really short of the responses. Um, but we're going to take those and they are going to go to real people and real organisations. We're not just going to sit in a, in a box somewhere, uh, we're going to make sure of that. Um, two things that we need to finish off with, which are, which are part of what E T L Act does. Uh, and one of them is to do with the minutes of previous meetings, but the second is, is, is public questions, which we've asked for on the slips. Um, and we've, we've had one slip back, um, which is unusual, but one slip. And, uh, so, uh, would you like to say your question, Vicky? Uh, have we got a, um, a microphone that Vicky can use?
Thank you, my name's Vicky Seddon. Um, I'm a local resident, um, and I'm part of a campaign group called Sheffield for Democracy. Um, and we try to, uh, uh, raise issues to do with voting systems, to do with how our national government works, to do with how our local government works, uh, to do with people's dissatisfactions that their voices aren't heard and taken account of. Um, and we would very much like to come and talk to the different community groups about the work we do and to think about how we can work with you. And in particular, if there are specific issues that a community feels around democracy, which a community feels is particularly relevant for them, we would love to come and talk to you about it and find some way of working with you on it. And, and so my question is, do, please, if you would like to get in touch with us, that would be lovely. We call Sheffield for Democracy, you'll find us on the, if you, if you look on the web, you'll find, we've got a Facebook. Um, I've got some little cards here if people want to be in touch with me personally. And it's been lovely to come and hear, I haven't been able to hear very well. The, the, the system hasn't been brilliant, has it? But it's been lovely to come and hear, these are many people from so many different communities and we would love to have better contact with you. Thank you.
Thank you, thanks, Vicky, that's really positive, actually. That, that's come over really well, um, and, uh, it's encouraging to us in that we've done the right thing. We've made it really vibrant, perhaps a bit too vibrant and, and, uh, we weren't expecting quite this number of people and the level of discussion has been amazing, uh, fantastic. Um, I've had two more questions just come in. Um. Both quite, well, one of them is certainly very complex. Um. Right, so, so the first one actually, um, has asked for, hasn't asked for it to be read out here, but to be taken back. The second one has. And that's, uh, an education question. Yeah, would you like to, to say your question then, Courtney?
Yeah, my question was, uh. What, oh, sorry, thank you. Um, my, I'm trying to remember it now, it was quite a long one. Um, it was reflecting on what plans, both financial, uh, financial support and time support are there? Because obviously we've spoken about education and how we need to change education, decolonise the education systems, we want to ensure people feel belonging and identity within the city. But to do that, schools need a lot of funding, they don't have a lot of funding for that, they also need time and support with these changes. Does the council have plans currently to both support schools to make these decolonised changes, not just to the history, but the entirety of the school framework? And also funding to support already fantastic learning opportunities that we have in Sheffield, such as the Migration Matters Festival that we've got going on?
Would you prefer to take an answer if we took this back to the education department and got the head of the education to get, to get back to you on that very question?
Yeah, well, we will, we have to answer that.
Can we feedback at the next meeting then? Yeah, you answer that, yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Courtney. Um, we, we should have had, um, one of our senior directors, Meredith, join us today. Uh, we'll take the question back and we'll make sure that we publish, publish the question online and to be open and transparent, um, and I think it may mean that we have a wider conversation because it's probably not just us as a council in terms of funding and possibly working with the universities. But we'll take it back and we'll get a response to you, uh, and to the audience as soon as we can.
Can, can we also put it in the minutes for next time as well? Attach it to the minutes for next time? Yeah? Thank, thanks, Courtney. Turned it off. Um, the last item of business is to do with. The last item of business is to do with minutes of the previous meeting, which have been available to councillors. So this is for councillors only to approve those minutes of the previous meeting. It's a formal piece that we have to do. I've been thumbs up along the table. Great. Thank you, everyone. That's wonderful. Right, thank you very much. It's been astonishing. Thank you very much. I've learnt a lot here. Right. Thank you, Beth.